Butler.
President.
Commissioner Dawson.
Present.
Commissioner Lucas.
Present.
Mayor Rennie.
Present.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you. We're called to order. Commissioner Lucas, will you let us know our prayer and pledge, please?
If you please stand. By your heads. Dear Lord, we just thank you for this evening. We ask that you bless our city, be with us tonight as we make decisions to better this place. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of agenda and executive session announcements. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion?
Hearing none. Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Rennie.
Aye. Public hearings, there are none except with the items we're discussing later. Citizen comments?
Yes, ma'am. One tonight, Ms. Leslie Street.
If you'll give us your name and your address, and you have three minutes.
My name is Leslie Street, and I'm at 1062 Highway 96 North. During the last meeting, the Treebank Fund account was at $100,000, and a possible up to $590,000 in the next maybe six months is what was quoted in the video. I would like to suggest that some of the funds, if not all the funds, go to putting a bigger buffer around the property line of Bowie Nature Park and the Veterans Park to help protect it for future growth. Also want to suggest, instead of hiring a firm from Nashville, hire someone who actually deals with taking care of the land. Ms. Bowie knew what she was doing, and we need someone who can do the same thing, more like farmers, park rangers, forestry, something besides a firm who deals from Nashville. Come on, we're not Nashville. My second thing is too, why are there still public hearing signs still out after the public hearing? This is a concern because citizens do not know if it is new or not, and you can't stop on the highway to look. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Public announcements, city events?
It's out tonight, so I'll just mention this Saturday is the Second Annual Arts and Crafts Fair. We were out there today marking off all the booth spaces, and we do have, I believe, 70 booth spaces filled for Saturday, so it's going to be quite a big event. There will be food trucks there, and there's some inflatables for the kids, so in addition to the playground, you can bring the whole family out and enjoy little time. It's supposed to be a beautiful day on Saturday. Also coming up in November, Pork in the Park is a big event, and then we have several more as well through the holidays.
What time is that Saturday?
I knew you were going to ask that.
Sometime.
Is it nine?
I think it's nine. I think it starts at nine.
I think it starts at nine.
Yeah.
Staff comments? Mr. Collins?
Yes, Mayor, I have a, excuse me, now the Fire Department, Police Department reports, and then some general updates for you under City Manager Report. Under the Fire Department report, beginning with August and September, we had, in August, we had 103 calls, and 2022 and 2021, we were at 117. September, 90 calls in 2022, 118 in 2021. If you look at this map, where we've noticed a trend, the only months during the year so far that we exceeded more calls this year than last year were two, January and July. For every other month, we've experienced a smaller call volume than we did last year, which is good. When we're talking emergency services, the fewer calls, the better. We want to be prepared, but that's preparation we don't have to use. So we're a bit pleased at the reduced number of calls. On the next page, our August and September breakdown, the majority of those are rescue emergency or rescue emergency assist. Those typically hover in the 70% to 80% range. We were, August and September, 79% and 76%, or rounded up 80 and 77, respectively. But again, within the norms of the service that we provide each month. The next page, our heat maps. These are relatively unchanged. You may recall that for the July meeting, a report, we did have one area in and around the Highway 96 and 100 interchange, Fernvale, that had a few extra calls that month. There is a, there's a home complex out there, or a condominium complex out there, and we had just a rash of calls that were there. None of them were serious, just health-related calls, but we hadn't experienced that before, and we haven't experienced since. So we don't have an explanation for the number of calls, other than they were general medical, but they had not, they've not been repeated, and they were not a repeat from previous months. So that's always good news for all of our residents. Our monthly training hours for August was 534, which is about the standard. September, 547. You can see how those training hours are spread across the month and the different areas of training that they are engaged in, but it's a fairly robust training system and program within the Fire Department. The next page, significant events for August, we had 19 overlapping incidents, four automatic or mutual aid to surrounding fire departments outside the city limits, one incident where a fire was extinguished, one vehicle removal, a non-accident related, and then training at two structures that are planned for demolition through a partnership with the Planning Department and the Fire Department. We were able to use those structures for training, which is always good for us to be able to do. Not only does that help us with the training, but it's indicative of the staff's effort to clean up some of the properties that we've seen across the city and make some efforts to get some problem areas cleaned up. So there's a dual benefit to that. The next page is some typical photographs from some of our training and activities that we had through the month of August. The next page, our significant events for September, 16 overlapping incidents, four automatic or mutual aid, calls to surrounding fire departments, three incidents where a fire was extinguished. This is two different vehicle fires and the grass fire. That'll become important when we get a couple pages from here. Two patients removed from vehicles using our hydraulic tools. You may recall that we purchased two new of those last year. Those are super beneficial to the Fire Department. We hope we never use them, but it is helpful to have that equipment. We did assist the county with one rope fire, our rope rescue incident. We had two new hires complete their training and report to their shifts, and we had 45 public outreach interactions at three different events. The next page you see is training and activities for the month of September. Those are standard photos that we have there. One area of note, on the bottom left, you'll see a training at the wooden structure that we have. That is at the back of the fire station. That thing has been in place for several years. We have a bid on the website now to rebuild that. In the bond issue money that we had, we have some money available to rebuild or to build a new training facility, and it will be a training facility and a smoke facility and a burn facility. It will be on the campus of the Fire Department. We hope to get those bids back, or we will get those bids back in late November. And once we get those bids back, we anticipate that structure being constructed in the spring of 2023, and again, it will be on-site at the Fire Department. So we need to get rid of this wooden structure and replace it. We do have the funds available, and that will be a significant upgrade to the Fire Department once we're able to move that wooden structure. The next page, August dispatcher arrival time, four minutes and 35 seconds, average operating time on scene, 15 minutes and 20 seconds. Dispatcher arrival time, four minutes and 41 seconds for September, consistent average operating time on scene, 1726. You may recall that in August, we had one fire that was extinguished, and in September, we had three fires that were extinguished. That results in the longer on-scene time. We're averaging about 16 minutes, but to have three fires extinguished and only see our on-scene time increase by two minutes month over month is a pretty substantial, pretty substantial effort by our Fire Department to make sure they remain in service to the extent that they can. I'd be glad to answer any questions on any of that for the Fire Department, but that's the month of August and September.
Are there any questions for the?
Mayor, I have one. So the 16 overlapping calls that they had, were we able to provide service to those residents, or did we have to use mutual aid, or?
No, we were able to provide, we were able to provide that service. And on the overlapping calls, some of those calls overlapping, we respond with Williamson County EMS. Even if it's a Williamson County EMS-only call, we respond to them. So some of those calls come out when we are an assisting unit, not a primary unit, and then we go out on those calls. As an example, let's say there's a lift assist or an emergency, a call that, a heart call or some other thing that's typically going to be Williamson County EMS, we're going to support them in that call, but we're the secondary, not the primary, and if a call goes out, we'd be the primary on our own call. The same with, if we are on a call, every time Williamson County EMS is dispatched to a call in the city limits of Fairview or in this call area, they dispatch a support unit to proceed toward Fairview to make sure that if there's an overlapping call for EMS, that they have a unit en route for that call, even though the call hasn't been made yet. So we try to work that in both directions to make sure we have help coming, and we don't put our unit out of service for what's typically an EMS call as support only. So I hope that answers your question.
Any other questions? Ready for the police report?
Yes, the police report, for the month, we're fully staffed at 23. Overtime for August and September was zero for both months. That's good for the Police Department and good for us. You may recall that about 18 months ago, we revised our pay plan, and we revised our hourly accounting for police service, and we knew that the result of that was going to be a decrease in overtime. We didn't expect it would be zero overtime hours for two months in a row, but we're glad to see that that was successful. Training hours for August was 420, training hours for September, 359. We expect that to go down a little bit once you get into the full swing of school. You don't have the ability to assign people to training on shifts. Typically, they're catching that, training in a different time just because of the workload requirements of the on-shift during the school year. Calls for service, self-initiated activity, August, we were at 890, September, we were at 921. If you look to the left, you see September is in yellow and August is in blue. Those should be reversed. So if you would, just the bar to the right, August is in yellow and September is in blue. That's just a typo on the months to the left. Activity for August, 76 arrests for domestic arrests, three DUIs, 10 drug charges, two thefts. September, 74 arrests, one domestic, one DUI, nine drug charges, and four thefts. Citations fairly consistent, 101, 108. Traffic accidents, 19 August and 18 September. The next page, we did have one officer graduate from the Police Academy, Morgan Smith. We look forward to having Morgan in service. She'll have to go through the Police Department's field training officer program, but we're glad to have her on shift and a part of the team, and look forward to her being able to act independently and help us in our Patrol Division. With that, I'll be glad to answer any questions regarding the Police Department.
Are there any questions on the police report?
Mayor, if none. Operationally, just a few things to go with you first as it relates to Ms. Street's comments earlier. Just, Ms. Street, if you would, if you would, just email me the location of those signs. I'll go out and make sure, or my staff will go out and make sure that it's not something that needs to be removed or redated or something like that. So just email me that information. We'll be glad to follow up and make sure we get that taken care of. Informational, defense bids for the playground. We have two vendors that will be on-site next week. To get us those bids, we look forward to getting that information in. Hopefully, we'll be able to have that to the Board at the October 20 BOC meeting, but we do have some positive progress on being able to get that work done. So we're looking forward to seeing that completed. On the October 20 agenda, I emailed this to you earlier, the, on the October 20 agenda, we will have the first reading for the revision to the ordinance that includes our building permit fees. You'll get that ordinance a few days before the agenda goes out. As I said in the email, that agenda will go out on Monday, the 17th. You'll get that actually, that ordinance the Thursday before. I would encourage you to read over that ordinance, not that it has to be memorized, but just kind of understand what that is. And I will send a recap when I send the ordinance to let you know the anticipated amount that will go into the operating account, the facilities fund account, and the park fund account based off of that. So you'll have the financial information in addition, or the anticipated financial information in addition to the revised permitting process and fees, fees themselves. We are also working on having for you for October 20th, and I believe we'll be able to have this, a smaller version of Robert's Rules of Order. If you prefer, you can call it Fairview's Rules of Order, but we've talked for some time about how do we have a smaller block or page, or pages of general decorum and rules for how the Board operates. We expect to get that to you. If not, at October 20th at the next meeting, although I expect to have it to you on the 20th. I think that will help us going forward, so we all know kind of just how the Board functions generally. That will apply to the BOC and the Planning Commission for the typical operating procedures. October 20, most of you received an email for a Commissioners Camp on October 20. That'll be an abbreviated Commissioner Camp. That will apply to all of you, all of the candidates for Mayor and City Commission. It'll be on October 20 from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. This is going to be an abbreviated Commissioner Camp, but an equally important Commissioner Camp. As all of you are aware, oftentimes between the election, certification of the election, and being sworn in, there's not a lot of time. It's just, it's kind of unfair as it relates to the elected officials, because the expectation is, once they're sworn in, they're ready to get to work, and oftentimes, that's just not the case. It's, there's a lot to learn and not a lot of time to learn it. We want to help to get everyone up to speed as quickly as we can. There'll be a lot of questions answered. Staff will assist without a course, but that two hours will be an important two hours. So for all of you who can attend, we hope that you can, all the candidates, we hope can attend, and it's also open to the public. There's a lot that goes on where, just how does this work? How does this function? What does the process mean? So we want as many people who can attend, attend, we'll facilitate that the best we can, but our goal is to make sure, once all the elected officials are sworn in, then our business of the city operates uninterrupted. So that's our goal. We hope that we're successful there. You received an email earlier today regarding the zoning codes and the email that I sent. Tonight, you have on the agenda the formal adoption of the comprehensive plan. We've been working for some time on the zoning codes. The zoning codes will follow, will follow this. The staff, the Planning Department, Ms. Todd particularly, has worked exceptionally hard to put this set of zoning codes in place, and it is exhaustive. When we talk about a revision, it's a full and complete revision of the zoning codes and procedures that we have right now. As we sit here tonight, we forecasted out some dates. As we sit here tonight, the anticipated second read of that will be on Thursday, March 2nd. I'll get an email schedule out to everyone, and we'll work backwards from that. But what will be important is a work session, joint work session, between the Planning Commission and the BOC that is scheduled for Tuesday, November 13. That's going to be a come-and-go work session. We're going to have, that's on a Planning Commission date, but we're going to have that work session from noon, 12 noon until 6:30 p.m. It'll be a come-and-go work session. I anticipate everyone to be able to spend six and a half hours, but as I stated in the email earlier today, you'll get the new codes well in advance of that meeting. There'll be some information to follow with that, but what we want to be able to do is answer everyone's questions from the Planning Commission and BOC at that date. We'll ask everybody to review, email the questions to a single email address. We'll follow up on what those questions are, get the answers out, and be able to have most of the language cleaned up before we get to the proposal to the Planning Commission to approve that, which we have the January Planning Commission meeting. So when I say we're moving in a hurry to get that work done, a hurry doesn't describe the amount of work that's being put in play, but if we approve or adopt the comprehensive plan tonight, it's going to be important that every supporting document for that comprehensive plan be in place as quickly as possible. The language is there, and now we're just looking for input to clean it up and get it going. So the next 90 days will be incredibly important, but they'll also be incredibly beneficial long-term. So we look forward to that date. And then lastly for you, you have on the agenda tonight, consideration of selecting a vendor for the Parks Master Plan. There are a lot of moving parts and components with that, as was described in the emails previously and described to the vendors. Our intent is to have that plan back to the Board of Commissioners no later than March 31. The reason that becomes important is if there are financial goals, obligations, or investments to be made as a result of that park, we like to be able to include part of them, to the extent we can, in the budget that starts July 1. So if we get that report or that plan back by March 31, that's going to give us about 30 days to scrub through it, figure out what we think we can do financially, identify that list and move forward. So it's important that we're able to get that report back by the 31st if we do the report. As a part of that, you may recall that we've been advertising for some time for a program director at the park. We've received three applications so far. We'll continue to advertise that for about another 45 to 60 days. That will give us a little bit of time to figure out what, how that position may look, either the same or differently, based on some of the feedback we're getting initially in the Parks Master Plan discussion. So if we're not successful filling that, we may look at a rewrite a little bit of that job description to make sure that it fits with what we think the Parks Master Plan is going to do, and maybe do a re-advertising and reclassification of that position. So it's not that it's falling off the radar, it's just that we're like everyone else. We get a few applications. We want to have the best pool we can, and in this instance, we may want to revise it just a little to make sure that the pool that we are seeking falls in line with the plan that may or may not be in place as we arrive closer to that. So I know that's a lot of information going to you, but there's a lot going on at the city. I'll be glad to answer any questions I can on any of that, and if not, I might be any information for you tonight.
Are there any questions?
I have two. The update on playground equipment, the zipline swing, do we know anything about that?
We do. We've reached out to the vendor on that, had them come out and take a look at that. They're working on a date to come out and make sure that they can inspect those and make sure they're all functioning safely and properly.
Okay, and then, public work side, could you give me the dates on going from limbs to leaves?
The limbs ends this month. October's the last month.
October, and then leaves start?
Leaves start November.
November, okay.
So, and we have had a couple calls on that. We haven't experienced anything that has been missed, but once we get to the end of October, after we've run the routes, we will probably take two days and run just a final route, just to make sure we've picked up anything that we can pick up, but then we'll transition right into leaves. So there won't be any more scheduled pickups after the fourth Tuesday in October, which I believe will be October 20. Twenty eighth. Twenty fifth. So the next week, we'll go through and just kind of make a pickup run to make sure nothing we missed, but then we'll transition right into the leaf pickup.
Anything else? Thank you, sir. Item nine, consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Rennie.
Aye. Old Business, 10A, rezoning of 7.52 acres located at 7319 Wiley Circle. We will open the public hearing on that item now. Is there anyone here to speak on that? If you'll come to the podium and tell us your name and your address. I'm sorry?
I'm actually speaking on behalf of the project as a partner here with the owner.
Now, this is the public hearing part, so if there's anyone here to speak for or against this project? If you'll come to the podium and tell us your name and your address.
I'm at 1062 Highway 96 North here in Fairview. I was looking at this on the map, and again, this is on Wiley Circle. The property owner listed is not the owner now, and this is piling more stuff upon what we're dealing with already. So the decision to make it an RS15 is not a good decision at this moment, in my opinion, again, due to the fact that you're piling more and more stuff on Fairview and us citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak on this? Saying no one, we will close the public hearing? Old Business, item A2, second and final reading of ordinance 2022-25. Vice Mayor?
An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city Fairview Tennessee by rezoning 7.52 acres of property located at 7319 Wiley Circle, consisting of Williamson County Tax Map 042 IA, parcel 005.00, from RS40 residential to RS15 residential. Property owner Lynn Eldridge, Agent T2 Engineering. Move for approval?
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Mayor, I have just a question. When it comes to the landowner, there was a question just about who owns the land.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Collins, can you speak on behalf of that?
So in this instance, the, I'm not aware that there's a landowner change. The landowner record is the applicant and their representative.
Okay.
So if there's a change in that, then I'm not aware of that, and there's not been a request by anyone to not proceed that's related with the property regarding that specific request.
Very good. So this meets the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. Is that correct?
I believe it falls in accordance with the plan.
I believe it does as well. So, you know, when we start talking about the medium density, especially the closer we get to town center, which this is going to be very close to town center, this is within the plan that the community has decided with our, on behalf of the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. So this looks like it's in line with that density for that area specifically. The neighborhoods that are adjacent are also that same density. So that's what I have, Mayor. Thank you.
What neighborhood, I'm sorry, I'm going to let you speak first. How's that? Thank you.
There's not been a change in ownership and Lynn.
If you'll speak into the microphone.
There's not been a change in ownership. Living Large LLC is the submitting party, which up here mentions Lynn Eldridge, which is the owner. So there's not been any change at all.
Okay.
So what are the neighborhoods next to this?
Mayor, so if you'll look, just if you're looking to the bottom of this, below this, that's the new development that's adjacent to City Hall that will make its way to the back. Obviously, you're on Wiley Circle, so if you're looking up to the right, where it says Wiley Circle, where you have that arrow pointed just above that, is Western Woods subdivision?
And those are half-acre, quarter-acre lots?
I believe that is an R15 pud.
Okay.
So they're a little, that subdivision's a little more dense than what is proposed here. Over to the left, if you were to continue to go to the west, the subdivision you would get to would be Cox Run subdivision. Those are R20. So if you're looking generally in the area, you're R20. To the west, R15 pud, to the northeast, and then... To the west, R-15 pud, to the northeast, and then R-15 pud to the south.
Thank you.
At the last meeting, they referenced 13 to 14 lots in total. So the lot sizes would be closer to the 20,000 and a half acre square foot. An improvement to Johnson Drive, a pedestrian path for future connection to the town center on the south side. Just some of the notes I had.
We've actually reduced that now to about 11 lots.
Is there any other discussion? Thank you. We have a motion and a second on the floor. If there's no more discussion, Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
No.
Motion carries.
New Business, first reading of ordinance 2022-28, Vice Mayor?
An ordinance to amend Title IX, Chapter VII of the City of Fairview Municipal Code by adding Section 9-701 entitled Food Trucks.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor, is there any discussion?
I have a question about, let me turn to this page. It's under 9-703.
What's the page number?
Location and hours of operation.
Page two.
I'm sorry, page three. It starts on page two, but continues to page three. It's actually under C. Food trucks may operate no more than four days per calendar week at a location on privately owned property. Currently, we have Jingo Java. And if I'm correct, they operate six days a week excluding Sunday. So how will that affect Jingo Java?
Obviously, they will be limited to the same, I don't know anything about the specifics of that business, but they would be the same as any other business and fall under the four day per week.
And we also have Whiskey Fire that is out on Highway 96. They would be reduced to four days a week as well?
Yeah, anything would be the four days a week. Now, I don't know about the first one that you mentioned. I know, I have had a couple of meetings with the Whiskey Fire owner regarding a couple of other matters. And I believe they are operating four days or less per week. According to him, they've reduced those dates simply because it's not sustainable under their business model to continue that. So he has described that to me himself. Regarding the other one, I'm not sure. But with this, everyone will be subject to the four days a week. I think the purpose of that is to ensure that a food truck doesn't become a permanent restaurant. I mean, at some point, that's what you're opening. So I think the intent of a food truck is to be portable and open from time to time, not a standalone restaurant as a food truck as we know it. But within this, if this is approved, then every food truck would be limited to four days of operation per week.
Jingo Java considered a food truck, or is it considered a?
By this ordinance, it's a food truck.
Okay.
But it's, that's, again, I don't know anything about the operations of the business, but they don't operate on their own parcel under their own zoning. I believe that's at the Taekwondo location.
Yes.
And they are simply a food truck set up on another parcel of property. And again, they use their parking, their facility, all that goes with that. So they are not a standalone business, it's a food truck regardless of the number of days they operate.
Is there any other discussion?
On item, page three, item three, restroom facilities?
Okay.
I just want to get a little understanding of what's expected there.
Exactly as it reads. And for the purpose of, I'll read, it says, "Food trucks operating in a location for a duration of more than three hours must have written agreement available upon request by the city that permits employees to have access to flushable restroom no more than 450 feet of the venue location during all the hours of operation." Effectively, without this, then you don't have any sanitary location for anyone who's been there for longer than three hours to use a restroom or wash their hands. So what we're looking to do is make sure that if someone's going to be set up at a location, then they have access to restroom facilities.
Any other discussion?
Mayor, I've got a couple of questions. So in the case where we have this limited time threshold that they can actually operate within the city, for some of these food trucks that want to leave their truck there, and let's say they only operate during that time period, can they still leave the truck there, just not sell their product?
There's no prohibition regarding parking.
Right.
So if they have, outside of the permit to operating, if they're not operating, then they would not fall under this permit. So if the property owner or wherever they are allows them to park their vehicle and it's not an operation, that is outside of this ordinance and not governed by that. So they certainly could park there.
So this is, talking about this ordinance here, and this is just talking in generality, cities love their food trucks, right? I mean, the food trucks that come in with, there's that Facebook post, everybody's posting, hey, who's going to be in town this week? Part of the issue or problem that we run into with food trucks, they are in competition with our brick and mortar established restaurants that we currently have. So can you talk a little bit about taxes, for example, for our brick and mortar versus a food truck that comes in? And where those taxes go?
So taxes are a little bit complicated. Obviously, the City of Fairview does not have its own sales tax, right? The sale tax rate is governed by, the state of Tennessee is capped. In Williamson County, the sales tax is capped right now. So from a sales tax perspective, the process or rate that the city would collect those funds would be the same. There would be no difference in that. Where you would get into an issue with food truck versus brick and mortar is if you have an established restaurant in the city, and then someone in the general area comes in and brings in a food truck that's going to be directly competing with that. Now, obviously, there would be some competitions there. And I think favor generally would be, and I say favor, not in something done gratuitously for a business or some other thing, but I think the favor and preference in that is going to lend to the brick and mortar restaurant, the operation, the restaurant that operates all the time, as they do. So you run a delicate balance of a reduced investment for a food truck coming into your community and supplanting brick and mortar restaurants that you want to continue to thrive.
Right.
So part of this is simply for us to be able to regulate how that works. What this ordinance also does is give us what we haven't had in the past, which is information. How much are, how much business are these food trucks doing? When do they operate? How many people do they employ? What is the impact of that food truck on the local restaurants? If, let's say that there is, let's say we had a chicken restaurant in Fairview, and all of a sudden, a chicken food truck shows up twice a month, or once a month, or whatever the thing is. And I think you look at month over month revenue receipts and be able to figure out, is there an impact on that food truck, on that restaurant? Or a food truck on multiple restaurants? Right now, with it being unregulated, we have no way to measure what those impacts are. And those can be good or bad. But I think having that information for the city benefits us from several perspectives. One, how do we engage our partners in brick and mortar? Number two, if the impact is only positive, if the overall spend is greater, then how do you go back and entice other food trucks or locations or a food truck park or court or some other thing? So I think having that information only helps us. I think it does help protect the brick and mortar and gives everyone the ability to make informed decisions with information that we just simply don't have right now.
I think another common thread that we see here is also food safety. Just making sure that the truck is a food truck and just not selling food out of the van. So I see some things specifically in this ordinance, talking about safety for our citizens as well.
Yeah, obviously, first and foremost, as it relates to safety, it's fire safety and traffic safety. We want to make sure that those are governed, and there is a component to that. The second part of that, obviously, there's reference in here to commissary, where you keep your vehicle, keep and maintain supplies, that sort of thing. That we want to have the restroom facility as a part of the cleanliness of that. The other thing that we're doing is making sure that a food truck is a food truck, or a food trailer is a food trailer. But what we've seen on a few instances is Tractor Supply, which is where we've seen all of these things so far. But we've seen more than one instance where someone comes and sets up a tent and a grill and calls it a food truck. That's not a food truck, that's a person with a tent and a grill. So as we're looking at this, I think the regulation of this, at least initially, is informational. Now, let's say that this ordinance passes, we've gone through the process, we've gathered some information, and 12 months from now, we need to amend this in some way, what's working, what's not working. I think it's smart on behalf of the city to go back and look at what we've learned and review that. But in the interim, we're operating with no information at all. And I think this simply helps us informationally for the city. I think it is a safety measure for the public, and it offers some protection to the brick and mortar investor as we look to see what those impacts are and move forward with this.
So I have a technical question. The two vendors that we have here currently that have had long-term businesses here, and I think Whiskey Fire Grill has been here for over a year. I believe the coffee place has been here for over a year as well. Is there an opportunity for us to kind of grandfather them in, to allow them to operate seven days a week like they are currently?
Not within this, and I hear Mr. Potter saying no as well, and I'll elaborate on that. But again, I know for Whiskey Fire, they don't operate more than the four days, is what was described. So, and I had a meeting with the owner here in this room just last week on some other items, and he described to me their business model, and that's there. So again, the intent is not to put anyone out of business or harm their business, but it is to gauge some measure of how that business functions. For example, let's take a business that has operated as a business. Let's take the location that we're talking about for the coffee shop out on, or the coffee food truck that is on Highway 96. Again, separate of when they operate, we're looking at when are their restrooms available? When can they access a restroom, wash their hands, do those sorts of things? So it's a little more involved than just simply allowing them to operate within a certain number of days. And then with that, there may be an opportunity, as we go through this, to figure out what is a food truck zone? If you have a food truck and the city is okay at that point with a food truck becoming permanent, then how do we zone that and allow them to be in a certain location? Because the flip side for that is, let's say you have a food truck that's operating seven days a week, assume that it is. Well, there are operating times with, at the business, and again, this is the Taekwondo business, right? So let's talk about that property. And again, I don't know any of the names or associations with that. But with that, you run into a couple of other issues, for example, required parking. So if I have a parking lot, the Taekwondo building, that has a certain number of parking space requirements, a certain number of handicap parking space requirements, but a certain number of those spaces are being taken up by a permanent food truck. And if that food truck is operating permanently, then it is recurring taking up those spaces as well. So at that point, I have not just an operational question for the food truck, but a parking and safety issue for the building that occupies the lot or the space that's its own. So there are a lot of moving parts to how we address this. Again, the staff has no preference. If the board chooses to make it seven days a week, so be it, you can amend this as you choose. We gathered this information from some cities regionally to make sure we're kind of addressing what we need to do. But the overriding effort in this was to make sure we're putting something together that makes sense, we can learn from, and move forward adjustment-wise if we need to.
I noticed that throughout this, it states that the city can ask to see their permits. At this point in time, can the city go out and ask to see their health permit?
Mayor, if, we can ask to see health permit, that's the only permit there is. We don't have any other permitting process.
Well, that's what I mean. I mean, can we check to make sure they've even been inspected by the Health Department at this point in time? Do we have the right to do that?
We can, we have no enforcement, there's nothing we can do with that. I guess we could turn them in to the Health Department. But this gives the city some teeth. You have some locations that don't allow food trucks at all, City of Dixon.
Brentwood did not until a couple of years ago.
So it's becoming this thing, but everyone's learning what's the best practice within their own community. Obviously, Brentwood's not Fairview, Fairview's not Metro, Metro's not Chattanooga, some other place. So you have to figure out what's the best practice for you. The only way you can identify the best practice is to identify information. Right now, we simply don't have a mechanism to identify that information.
Any other discussion?
Mayor, I have one question with the, in relation to the frequency food trucks can operate no more than four days per calendar week at a location, if they move locations within the city? So if the coffee place that we're speaking about that's stationed at the Taekwondo place, if they're there four days a week, and then they move to a different location within the city? Is that allowed under this?
There's nothing that says they couldn't. Part of the issue they're going to have is the permitting process requires them to state where they're going to operate. So they're going to have to go back through another permitting process. They want to be three days a week, four days a week at Taekwondo, and three days a week at Tractor Supply. We're going to have to have two permits, we're going to have to know where they are for that process, so.
But I guess my question would be, excuse me, that would allow them to operate essentially seven days a week? Because of the location changes?
Under that scenario, yes. Now, I think their argument is going to be they're stationed where they are because they prefer to be stationary, which is, again, brings upon its whole set of issues. If you prefer to be stationary, then are you really acting in good faith as a food truck? Or are you trying to get around the regulations so you can operate a restaurant on an unzoned piece of property? And that's the question where you're trying to get to.
Mayor, for discussion or feedback, this certainly increases the regulations on food trucks and legitimizes the business much, much more. And that's what, I guess, the question would be, would we be okay with more than four days of business if they do hit all these checklists? Because it's quite a bit of checklist from ingress, egress, to bathroom facilities, to health facilities. Would it be okay if they can check all those to be more legitimized business, per se, to allow for more time than, say, six days or five days, or whatever that time is?
I think the sentence that Mr. Collins just now said about if they're there all the time, it kind of loses that food truck because they're a permanent fixture.
When are they a food truck, when are they a restaurant? And then let's take the location out at Taekwondo. It is what it is, no problem. Let's say the board decides we're going to make this seven days a week. It's your privilege, you can do that or not. But then what happens if I have three seven-day-a-week food trucks at Tractor Supply? Right? Because then I have a bigger issue. Tractor Supply has an issue, what about their parking? Um, Tractor Supply has an issue. What about their parking? What about their delivery? What about safety? What about the operations of the brick and mortar building that has to take precedent over the operations of the food truck? Um, the food trucks should be secondary, even if it's that high on the list, um, to, to the business that's there. Because keep in mind, every business permitted into this, in the city operates off of requirements specific for that brick and mortar facility. Their parking is required, their safety access is required, their handicap access is required, electrical, restrooms, all of those things. So for every food truck that's on a site, and for every hour of operation of that food truck, you're limiting the re- requirements set on the actual property itself. So I, I, I think the intent is to allow, I know the intent is to allow the food trucks within your municipality, but do it in such a way where everyone's on a level, on a level playing field. We know we're safe and we are not granting permanent status to what's supposed to be a temporary food truck. Because the permanent status of a food truck is a negative that will at some point have to be addressed to the permanent location of that. Again, parking alone, visibility, access, those sorts of things. So, um, again, the board's privileged to address that how you want, but, um, we, we strongly believe that the permanency of a seven-day-a-week permit for a food truck turns that food truck into a restaurant, and it has that restaurant on a location that's not zoned or, um, intended to be operated or served as a restaurant.
Cause it's a food truck.
Wow.
So, so with, I hope that answers the question. That's where we are at, at the thing. But I, there, there are a lot of moving parts and pieces to this, or lots of moving parts and pieces to this. And, um, the intent of this is to make sure we can do that. Again, if we get to the point to where, um, seven days seems, seems to be correct in certain locations, I think you go back and identify what those are. I do believe that seven days a week on, for a food truck at a location um, clearly violates the intent of what someone would to believe a food truck would be. Because now it's a permanent, it's a permanent structured location.
And I'm presuming that if I'm a restaurant owner in Fairview, and I've had to go through all the requirements of parking and all my stuff to be a brick and mortar building, and then suddenly the city starts allowing a food truck to be a permanent placement, I, I would be upset.
Well, let's, let's take, for example, the, the two locations we talked about that are, are discussed now, Whiskey Fire and, and the coffee shop, okay? I think that, um, they're not similarly the same in that the owner of Whiskey Fire also owns the property that Whiskey Fire sits on. Okay? So I think in that instant, that property owner has made the decision to put that there, and he's clearly operating four days a week or less, again, by, by his description of that, right?
But he doesn't, but he doesn't have improved parking.
I'm sorry?
He doesn't have improved parking, so this would technically take him out. Right?
Well, he, he'd have to go through the process, but again, he's the property owner, so he can assign that parking as, as he wants. And he owns the building, so the, the property that's owned. So he meets the restroom requirements, all the other things. So he can mark off his parking and do that and, and facilitate that. Um, the point with that is, he owns the, the, the trailer, he owns the property, not a big deal. I've been, I've never stopped at the coffee shop, or the coffee trailer on, on 100, or 96. I've never been in the parking lot, actually. What I've also not seen in the parking lot is a vehicle to move that trailer. That trailer appears to be set up as a permanent restaurant. Typically, if I have a food truck or a food trailer, specifically the trailer, I'm pulling it with something. In this instance, it appears that that thing's set up to be permanent. I don't see anything, I don't see where it's designed, other than being delivered there, that it's a food truck. It, it appears to be a, an, an, an open-air restaurant. Um, so again, you, you do as you want. Um, obviously, with that paragraph or the others, this is only a first read. Um, but the intent is to regulate these and get us the information so we can make some informed decisions.
Well, one thing that I do like about it, it gives the, um, the business owner the opportunity to see how their business will do four days a week, and then hopefully transition into a brick and mortar if it is going very well. So it, it's the opportunity, um, for sure, so.
So, so again, that, that paragraph is the, is a privilege of the board, as is the entire document. Um, but, but that's the, the genesis for it and the discussions behind it.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
So, I'm just, I'm just struggling with this because, hmm, I don't know. So Jingo Java, after our second reading, will have to close two days a week that they're already serving our community. And, I don't know.
I, I would love to hear them during public comments, for sure.
I would like to, so, we're having two readings on this, so they could come and...
I think the, my understanding of the ordinance is that we're trying to define for the City of Fairview, what are food trucks and what are, what are not food trucks, as I'm understanding now. If you're a food truck, then operating four days a week is not a big, like Whiskey Fire. And I've never thought of this, as you have explained it tonight until now, that if you're set up permanently, you're on a parking lot, you do not have any means to move your food truck, then it does appear that you are a permanent structure and should therefore meet with those permanent structure rules and regs. Correct?
I'm gonna say correct. I'm not sure if that's a comment or a question.
That was a question. That was, there was a question behind that.
But again, I, I would, I would, I would petition the board um, and submit to them that if a location is operating seven days a week in a parking lot that isn't theirs, with a trailer that is not mobile, and is arguing that they must operate seven days a week to function their business, that's a restaurant. That's not a food truck. That's not the intent of a food truck.
I, I think with the vote of this ordinance, we are going to be defining that.
Agreed. That, that's, that's the purpose of it. Again, it's privilege of the board, whichever, whichever way you choose. But that, that's, again, all of that discussion is how we arrived at, at, at that paragraph.
Thank you.
Let me, let me ask one more question. So in Dixon, there's, um, a coffee truck, I guess, that is permanent called Cup of Sunshine. What, if they don't, if they don't allow food trucks, like, what is the difference in something like that and a food truck?
I can't, I don't, I have, I have no idea for the speak, I couldn't speak for the City of Dixon or ev- or even where that is or what their regulation regarding that is. I just know they don't...
Mr. Potter, you, I mean, you don't know where it is? Okay, it's just past Colton's, but it's been there for years. Yeah.
So, so I, I, I don't know. I know the City of Dixon does not, does not allow food trucks. I don't know what other regulations they have. Um, I'm also not sure that, um...
They allow, they allow them for events.
This one's permanent.
But, but, commercial, they...
Like the fairgrounds, you know?
Right, but they're not, they don't allow them in, we're gonna sit in Walmart for three days, or Tractor Supply, or some other place. Um, it's also possible, depending on where that location is, um, that that location is not in the corporate limits of City of Dixon.
I think I know what you're talking about. Is that out there on like the first charity property?
It's right past Colton's on the left, across from the, like, construction company. I mean, is there a difference between serving food and serving drinks? Is that a difference?
I don't think so. No, yeah, I mean, I think that's a, I don't think that's a mobile business.
Any other discussion as it pertains to the Fairview ordinance? I'm presuming we have a first and a second on the floor. Thank you. Hearing none. More discussion. Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Can you clarify? Sorry?
Aye, sorry.
Thank you. Um, Vice Mayor Anderson?
No.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye. New business item B, first reading of ordinance 2022-29, Vice Mayor.
An ordinance to amend Title 8, Chapter 2, Section 8-211 of the City of Fairview Municipal Code to include Section 8-211A regarding permitting of beer sales from food trucks.
Is there a motion to approve?
Aye.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion?
Collins, can you give us just a little more? So this is a, a acting food truck by the, if the old, the other ordinance, and now they'd be able to serve, um, alcohol?
Yes, sir, that's correct. The, there, there was a request, um, by a vendor locally who, who is in the process of employing a food truck. Um, and they asked that they be able to sell beer from their food truck, and they, um, approached the city about obtaining a beer permit that would come to the Board of Commissioners. Um, the difficulty with that is, um, beer permits are assigned to permanent locations. Um, with that, um, you could assign, you could grant a beer permit to a food truck. However, we didn't have a permitting process, or the business license, so to speak, for a food truck. So without a food truck permit, we don't have anyone to issue a beer permit to. Um, so this is kind of twofold with that. So, um, this simply, um, is, is again, is an amendment to the ordinance. But it allow, it allows the Board of Commissioners or the Beer Board, if there's ever a Beer Board again, uh, the Beer Board or Board Commissioners, if the act is that, to issue beer permits to permitted food trucks.
Is there any other discussion, any questions? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye. New business item C, beer permit application, Nando's Food Truck. And all the information is intact and ready to go. So we just need a...
Motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
So Mayor, uh, Members, Members of the Commission, one item to be reminded, this, the beer permit application is before you. Um, and it, it can be approved. However, it can't be issued until there's a food truck permit to which the, so you, you're, there's nothing wrong with, with approving this application, but the permit cannot be issued until the two previous ordinances that you read have been approved by the Board of Commissioners.
Understood. Any other discussion or any questions? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson?
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye. Item D, first reading of ordinance 2022-27, Vice Mayor.
An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the City of Fairview, Tennessee by rezoning 25.04 acres of property located at 7309 Crow Cut Road, consisting of Williamson County Tax Map 046, parcel 018.00 from RS40 Residential to RS20 Residential. Property owners Donald A. Cunningham and Mary Ann L. Cunningham, Agent Rob Mulchen, SEC Incorporated. Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion or anyone here to speak on this?
Uh, good evening. My name is Owos Ahmed. I'm with SEC. Uh, I'm attending this on behalf of Mr. Mulchen. Uh, thank you, everyone, for being here, and I'm here to basically answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions?
Mayor, I have a question. So that subdivision there you see just at the top, what is, uh, that zoning? Do we know?
I believe that's, uh, PUDRS8.
It is, okay.
So it's less, it's more density than, uh, the one we're asking for.
Okay, higher density than what we're asking for here.
It's basically 8,000 square feet lots. We're asking for 20,000.
Very good. Thank you.
Other questions? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson, thank you.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
No. Item E, Resolution 34-22. A resolution of the City of Fairview Board of Commissioners accepting the lowest bid for a single resurfacing project and authorizing this work. Mr. Collins, you want to tell us about that?
Yes, Mayor, Members of the Commission, you were, Collins sent an email to you recently regarding this project. We, uh, were made aware that the state of Tennessee is resurfacing Highway 100, generally from the rec center, the Fairview Recreation Center, to, um, the overpass at Highway 96. Um, when, when that, um, bid was done, Tennessee Valley Paving, um, was awarded that bid, and we were given some information about a meeting regarding that, regarding that paving and that project. Uh, with that, we have, um, known for some time that we needed to resurface this section of King Road. Um, anyone who's traveled, uh, King Road, um, is aware that that's a highly trafficked section of road as it relates to the high school. Um, we had a couple of areas of maintenance that were an issue in there. Um, one specific issue that you had, we had in there was, um, a high concentration of what's called rust rock. Uh, rust rock is exactly what it is. It's a rock with a high iron content. Um, if you go down King Road, you could notice, um, that it actually appeared that sections of the road, uh, were browned, uh, where other sections of the road were not, and that's actually rust in some of the stone that was placed in that, in that asphalt at the time. Um, with the state coming in to do this work, um, we put this work out for bid in anticipation of being able to resurface this section of road uh, in conjunction with the section of road that was done on Highway 100. Um, Tennessee Valley was the low bidder. They were the only bidder, in fact, for this, for this project. And that's when we put this on the agenda for you. As I stated in our, in the email, the state met with Tennessee Valley and advised Tennessee Valley that if they were going to do the work, um, together, that King Road needed to be done in advance of Highway 100 because of some milling work that's gonna take place on Highway 100, which put the pressure on the city, um, to accelerate this project. If we did not accelerate the project, uh, we were looking at mobilization costs, uh, to us of about $12,000 in addition to potential damage that we did not want to have, um, done to the ingress and egress of King Road. Um, so we did move forward with that resurfacing as an emergency process. Uh, emergency, um, approval because of, of the pressure of damage that could be done to the road in the timeline we were given. What you're doing tonight is simply approving the bid itself. Um, the work has been done under an emergency approval, and we're just ratifying the, the bid itself.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or any discussion?
Mayor, just one other item on here, just in case there's any other question about that. Um, the cost of this work, um, the budget amount, um, that's approved in the city's budget does cover the cost of this work. So there's no budget amendment or any other thing. You're not voting to spend money that wasn't already budgeted. The budget was already, um, sufficient to cover this work. So, um, outside of that, this is simply an acceptance of the low bid.
Any other discussion?
Uh, just a comment. And Mr. Collins, you've told us before, we've spent more on paving this year than we have in 10 or 15 years combined for improvements, and this is the second time that we've tagged on to another project to save mobilization fees, to save some other fees. So I think it's, I think it's great. Just wanted to make a comment of that, for us to be able to kind of tag on something else and have, find savings and get projects done.
We, we are glad to have the money in the bank to be able to do that first. And then anytime we can, um, save those dollars in conjunction with another project, either the county or the state, it just makes sense to do. Um, the last one we did on Fernville Road clearly made sense for the, for the investment of that road. Um, this one makes sense as well, and we're gonna attempt to do that for every project we see, we see coming, even if it's something that wasn't on our radar. Um, if it's not an immediate project, but it could be, and there's a substantial cost savings, we want to move that project up if we can to get the most for our own, for our own dollar.
Any other discussion? Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Mayor Rainey?
Aye.
Item F, Resolution 35-22, a resolution of the City of Fairview Board of Commissioners to formally adopt the Fairview Forward 2040 Comprehensive Plan. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mayor, you have a motion in four seconds.
We'll count those. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson?
Mayor Ranny?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Mayor, Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Finally, thank you. G, Resolution 36-22, Vice Mayor.
A resolution of the City of Fairview Board of Commissioners to select a consultant firm to develop, prepare, and deliver the city's park system master plan.
I added this item to the agenda with the recommendation that we hire ESP. Loos is a huge, great company, and they presented us pictures of all sorts of sports complexes. But ESP seemed to be more prone to do what we need to do at Bowie, since we don't have, in our other parks, since we don't have that kind of land for huge sports complex developments.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second? I will second that. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion?
So is, is that what we're voting on specifically, ESP, or it, what is, what is the resolution that we're voting on?
Yes, sir. The, the, the resolution you have before you is to select ESP. The, the resolutions state specifically on this. Now I'll read the entire resolution to you.
Okay.
Whereas the City of Fairview recently solicited requests for qualifications for the purpose of selecting a firm to prepare the city's park system master plan, and whereas ESP Associates was invited to make a formal presentation to the Board of Commissioners at the September 15, 2022 Board of Commissioner, uh, Board Meeting, and now forthwith be it resolved by the, by the Board of Commissioners of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, as follows. The City of Fairview, Tennessee Board of Commissioners hereby selects the firm of ESP Associates to develop, prepare, and deliver to the city, the city's park system master plan, and authorizes the city manager to execute any and all contracts and agreements between ESP Associates and the city of Fairview for these services, and affirms that any contract between ESP Associates and the city of Fairview shall state that the completed park system master plan is to be delivered to the city manager no later than Friday, March 31, 2023.
Great, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
So...
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Dawson, go ahead.
So, uh, looking at both of the, the folks who are companies that came and presented, was very impressed with ESP. Their presentation was great, and when you look at their book of business of what they've done in the past, I'm going to have to agree with the mayor that they have done light projects. I was also very impressed by their subject matter experts that they have on their panel, specifically to help us with our park master plan. They, they have a wide variety of subject matter experts, and I truly believe that they really outshine the competition. So, very much in, in favor. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Vice Mayor?
Did we get a bid from each one, Low Sand ESP? I was just curious what that bid came in at.
Bid specific, you may recall that we, we did RFQs, obviously Request for Qualifications, and we had those, was, had those come in. On professional services, you don't, you don't bid cost. The professional services kind of outweighs that. That's the purpose of doing an RFQ versus an RFP. I did, once the mayor notified me that she wanted to offer a resolution selecting ESP, I did reach out to ESP and ask them for their anticipated cost for the project. As I stated in a previous email to, to all of you, their estimate was between $75,000 and $100,000, $75,000 and $100,000, dependent upon, in the $25,000 difference range, dependent upon the level and effort of community outreach to be involved. And I assume that to be community meetings, those sorts of things. I did not reach out to Lowes, simply because I did not have a request for Lowes, and we weren't at that time competing on, on the, the project cost. It's been my experience that, once you go through the RFQ process, and you, you've selected a vendor for professional services, if that transitioned into a cost competition, it's been my experience that, and I think for all Request for Qualification projects, that cost cutting becomes a bit of an issue with amendments to your project, later in the project, where your, your bids then present, are presented within a wider range. Again, the selection was for Request for Qualifications. The information I got financially was purely informational for, for the, the board. If it's, if the board chooses to not approve this resolution, or there's a preference that I solicit the same cost estimate from Lowes, I'll be certainly glad to do so. But the reason I didn't was simply because of the Request for Qualifications. And then once there was a selection, I thought it would be our effort to select. I believe it would be important to the board to know what that, what the financial impact of that would be.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Lucas?
Aye.
Mayor Ranny?
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Any question from the mayor and commissioners? Commissioner Butler?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a, a quick thank you to staff for, for continuing the hard work. Two big items tonight, Parks Master Plan, Comprehensive Plan. Congratulations to Officer Smith, and I hope everyone enjoys their fall break next week. Nothing further, Mayor.
The end.
End.
Mr. Dawson?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, what a huge accomplishment. Back in 2015, we, we started this journey with the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. And tonight, we have finally hit that benchmark. I mean, just amazing that we've finally gotten here. We still have a lot of work to do, but signing this ordinance is, or it, it's just, this is, or, it's just amazing. Just amazing that we have finally gotten here. This is really big for the city of Fairview. So thank you, staff, for working so extremely hard on this and, and getting it, that, getting us to this milestone. Congratulations to Fairview High School. They had a big homecoming win last weekend. Man, the, the energy that we had here in the city with the homecoming parade was amazing. And what a, what an awesome Friday night that was for, for the city of Fairview. We certainly are a, a city of, of parades, and it was a great showing in, in the middle of a Friday. So thank you, Fairview, for showing up, and congratulations, Fairview High School. Also, as we, as we continue this journey for our park master plan, just another big day for Fairview. We have so many people that absolutely love our park system, that enjoy our park system, and now we have the opportunity to make it greater, to really focus and make our park system a priority. And tonight was that first step. So I want to thank the community, and certainly the board and, and the city staff for this big milestone, just all the way around. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Lucas?
Thank you, Mayor. Two things. One, as it related to the food truck, Vice Mayor, you brought up Cup of Sunshine. I was not familiar either. I just looked it up. It's about quarter of a mile outside of the Dixon city limits.
I didn't know that, so thank you for...
Yeah, so that would, that would explain why. Outside of that, Mayor, I don't normally talk about what I do for a living, but something that happened this week that affects Fairview in a big way, I think is important. We launched a new program called The Doorstep Pantry that is covering most of Williamson County to include Fairview. So if any, anybody knows of, of a family that could use a free bag of groceries, they can go to thedoorsteppantry.com, they can sign up. It's absolutely free. There is no charge at all. There's no qualifying questions. You simply go on there, say you need a bag of groceries, and every Friday, a bag of groceries will be delivered directly to your home. So this is a pretty big deal for the city of Fairview. We're excited to be able to offer that. And so I just thought, if you could share that to your neighbors, family, that you think could use this, whether it's once a week, or whether it's for the rest of the year, it's available. And if you have any questions about it, I'd be happy to answer them. That's all I have tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
What is the email again?
The, the website's the...
Or, I'm sorry, website?
Yeah, thedoorsteppantry.com.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor?
I just want to let everybody know that we're honoring our seniors tomorrow night at the Fairview football game. Seniors that are football band, cheer, dance, will be honored tomorrow night. So it'd be a great time to come out and support Fairview High School. It's the last home, I mean, the last home game and, until our playoffs. But the seniors will be honored tomorrow night. And I just enjoy seeing the people that are out actually picking up trash, and let's just help keep Fairview clean. Thank you.
And just a reminder that the Arts and Crafts Fair is tomorrow at 9:00, I believe, is the start. Oh, we'll see. I've been thinking tomorrow's Saturday all day. Okay, the time is 9:00, and the day is Saturday, so we'll figure out the rest of it. And with that, I will like to hear a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
And we're adjourned.